Good evening. It's 20/20, 7:00 PM. And you are at the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Wausau. First order on the agenda is the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Next item is roll call. Peckham?
Here.
Martins?
Here.
Killian?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Wadinsky?
Here.
McElhany?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Herbst?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
All eleven members are present. Thank you very much. Next item are Proclamations. I have three of them for you tonight, so sit back and enjoy while I read them. The first proclamation is proclaiming the Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Wausau. Whereas life in Wausau is enriched by knowledge of our history and a celebration of all cultures. And whereas before European contact, Native Americans lived throughout the areas where Wisconsin is today, the Menominee, Ejeewa, Potawatomi, Ho'Chunk are among the original inhabitants of Wisconsin. They lived off the land, farming, hunting, and gathering, and maintained strong family ties and cultural traditions within their respective tribes. The presence of European settlers dramatically altered their way of life. And whereas by 1871, Wisconsin was a state, and most Native Americans had been placed on the reservation, the government changed its focus to de-Indianization of native population, creating boarding schools to rid them of their cultural traditions, breaking tribal ties, and molding them into the dominant culture. Whereas, the state of Wisconsin is comprised of eleven federally recognized tribal nations, including the Bad River Band of Lake Superior Tribe of Chippewa Indians, the Forest County Potawatomi, the Ho'Chunk Nation, the Cooteray Band of Lake Superior Chippewa Indians, the Lactiflambo Band of Lake Superior Chippewa Indians, the Menominee Nation, the Oneida Nation of Wisconsin, the Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chippewa Indians, the St. Croix Chippewa Indians of Wisconsin, the Sacagawea Chippewa Community, and the Stockbridge-Muncie Community Band of Mohican Indians. And whereas each tribe has a unique history and culture, and whereas the descendants of indigenous peoples in Wausau represent an important and valued part of our community, and their history remains our history, and so now therefore I, Katie Rosenberg, Mayor of the City of Wausau, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim that the Second Monday in October is Indigenous Peoples' Day in Wausau, and residents are encouraged to learn more about the history of indigenous peoples and to celebrate their culture. The second mayoral proclamation is White Kain Safety Day. Whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 100,000 Wisconsin residents, and whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids such as a white cane or a service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation, and whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss, and whereas Wisconsin's White Kain law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than 10 feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal, and whereas careful driving and fully stopping when pedestrians are in the crosswalk is beneficial to all residents, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Katie Rosenberg, on behalf of the residents of the City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 15th, 2020, as White Kain Safety Day in the state of Wisconsin, and also acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year-round. Lastly, the proclamation of Dwarfism Awareness and Acceptance Month. Whereas approximately one in 10,000 people are born with dwarfism, and it is estimated that 80% of people with dwarfism are born to average height parents, and whereas there are over 400 types of dwarfism, and whereas this year is the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and dwarfism is covered under the ADA, and whereas the term disability is not a bad word, structural and physical access continue to be significant issues for people with dwarfism, and people with dwarfism may still face discrimination or harassment, and whereas many of the barriers and obstacles are put in place by society even before any potential medical complications of dwarfism are considered, and whereas people with dwarfism come from all walks of life and contribute to Wausau's economy by being productive members of the workforce, holding a variety of different careers, and whereas October 25th is recognized as Dwarfism Awareness Day and aims to raise awareness and further educate individuals about dwarfism. Therefore, I, Katie Rosenberg, Mayor of the City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Dwarfism Awareness and Acceptance Month in the City of Wausau. Thank you. Next on the agenda are pre-registered citizens for matters appearing on the agenda and other public comment. I have one person who's registered ahead of time, Jennifer Blair. If you'd like to approach, I believe either podium will work for you.
(Inaudible)
Oh, apparently we've taken, you can approach the other one, kind of passing the first one. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Blair. I work for Sherre Construction at 601 Blackhawk Drive, Burlington, Wisconsin. I'm here to represent Jerry Copley for the Sturgeon Eddie Development.
Go ahead. Did you want to make your comment now?
Oh, I just was, no, I was just registered so I could speak if people had questions of the development.
Okay, no problem. Alright, thanks. Alright, the next item, we have our consent agenda. Alder Peckham has requested that the minutes of the September 22nd meeting be polled and voted on separately, but do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda without the minutes in there? Motion by Rasmussen, second by Peckham. Any discussion? Okay, we are doing a roll call vote, so Clerk Leslie will call your name and you can vote. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you very much. Alright, now we're going back to the minutes of the previous meeting, file number 200901, minutes of the previous meeting, 9:22:20. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Herbst, second by Peckham, and I assume Peckham, Alder Peckham, you have a correction you'd like.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I turned it on. The show probably sabotaged it.
District one, Tom Bruley.
Okay.
I think we can hear you, yeah.
Second to the last page, three lines down, where we're talking about the land-water lines, there is a, just a word swap necessary. There's a sentence that reads, "It has to be practical, or we hinder the risk of applying for the following year." And I think it should, it was just misheard, probably, I believe it should say, "Or we incur the risk of applying for the following year." And it does change the meaning, so I think that should be changed. And as long as we're having fun, the next sentence has an extra letter, the word "the", he noted "they" last warning, so we can fix that as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do I, are you making a motion for the correction?
I would move that that be changed.
To amend? Okay, do I have a second? Second by Neal, is there any further discussion on this? Alright, we are voting on the minutes as amended?
Amendment first.
Oh, we're voting on the amendment. Okay. We are voting on the amendment first. Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
He says aye.
Thank you. Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Alder Ryan? Oh, I can see you're saying aye.
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Okay, now we are voting on the minutes as amended. I don't know if we have any further discussion or allow that, but if not, I think we're ready to vote. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, we are moving on to file number 201003, Mayor's Appointments. For those of you who are in the chambers, there is an additional appointment that I added this afternoon. It is appointing Professor Doug Hostler to the Ethics Board. So I guess I would entertain a motion to accept the appointments. Motion by Killian, second by Larson, is there any discussion? Yes, Alder Peckham.
Can we act on this if it hasn't been on the agenda out there for 24 hours? Perhaps the attorney could tell us?
I think the appoint.
I think I'd bring it back and not act on it because you didn't give 24 hours in order of the other appointment.
Okay.
So what I see in my packet is the Rules Review Committee. So there's nothing in here about the Ethics Board, correct?
Yes, so I guess we'll be voting on Doug Hostler next meeting. But the Rules Review Committee?
I would move to approve the rest.
Okay, motion by Peck, oh, wait, we already had a motion, right? Yeah. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Could we amend the item to just include Professor Hostler and then vote on it as amended, if everyone agrees? Or not?
Well, you as the council can do whatever you please, actually, if the majority of you agree to it. And as I'm looking at the agenda item, it does say Mayor's Appointments. It doesn't say just to the Rules Review Committee.
Right.
Just out of an abundance of caution and fairness to the public, it not having been in the packet, I thought you should wait till next time, but if you want to agree to approve that one tonight, I think it would be covered under Mayor's Appointments on the agenda.
We seldom argue much about appointments. I'd make a motion to amend the Mayor's Appointments to include Professor Hostler.
Okay, I have a motion by Rasmussen. Do I have a second? A second by Herbst. Alder Ryan had her hand up, I believe, so I'll call on her and then I'll call on Peckham. Alder Ryan, you're on mute. You're still muted.
Would recommend put it for the next council meeting.
I'm sorry, Alder Ryan, you were on mute for most of what you were saying, but we had you on, now we have you unmuted. Oh, now you're muted again. Okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay. I'm gonna, okay, you are unmuted, please take the floor.
Okay. I would recommend bringing up the appointment on the next city council meeting. I have no information on the candidate.
Then I'll withdraw the amendment.
To withdraw your second? Sure. Alright, we're voting on Rules Review Committee, is there any further discussion? Alright, we're ready to vote. Ryan?
Ask her again.
Alder Ryan? Oh man, this mute button is our, if you could unmute yourself, Alder Ryan.
Ask her one more time.
Alder Ryan, could you unmute yourself and, I can see your mouth moving, but your little microphone is still blocked out. If you want, I can have Michelle unmute you. Okay, you are unmuted.
Okay, no.
You're voting against the appointment.
Yes, until next council meeting.
They removed, okay, I just want to be clear that they removed the Ethics Board, and we're just voting on Rules Review, that's in the packet right now.
Okay, alright, aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson? Alder Watson? We're gonna get this.
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to file number 201008, it's an ordinance from CISM authorizing the installation of stop signs on Stark Street at 10th. That was approved 3 to 1. Do I have a motion? Motion by Rasmussen, second by Neal, any discussion here?
Yes, Madam.
Yes, yes, Alder Neal.
I instigated this item, you know, it's been years trying to get to this point with it. We've, you know, received various complaints on Stark Street about speed of people barreling down Stark Street. You can go well over a mile on Stark without encountering a stop sign. And subsequently, we had a traffic study done to look at this, because normally, we will place stop signs on the slower of the intersecting streets. Our traffic count found that the two streets were very, very close in traffic volume, which brought us to the point, okay, does this, you know, get us to the point where we might be able to have a four-way stop? Bear in mind that the traffic volume count that was taken occurred at a time when there's no traffic going to or from Wausau East High School, no traffic going to or from the swimming pool, or from, to or from Tom Field, which also includes quite a bit of pedestrian traffic. So after a lot of discussion, it was passed in committee, and I just want to reiterate that this would really be nice for the neighborhood, and, you know, the incremental difference in traffic volume really seems to merit that both streets would do with stop signs, that we'd have a four-way stop there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alder Ryan, I see that your hand is up, and I just want to ask you if it's for this item that you'd like to talk? Or if it's just still up? No, okay, no problem, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Oh, Alder Peckham.
Thank you. From reading the voluminous record that was brought with this item, it does seem like from a traffic flow point of view that this is wrong-headed, but I think it's even more wrong-headed to turn that into a four-way stop, so for the do, if Stark Street is the one where we want the stop sign, then I'll just get rid of the ones on 10th.
Okay, thank you, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. One of the things that we did with our traffic study was we took a look at the MUTCD standards that we are required to abide by when we placed traffic, when we placed traffic controls. And so ordinarily, we always want the traffic control on the less traveled street, like Tom said. We did though ask the Assistant City Attorney for a review of those standards as respects this situation. And so those standards did indicate that you can install a four-way stop where traffic volumes are relatively similar. And that was the grounds that we used to approve this particular four-way stop, because the traffic study did indicate that the volume on the two was very close. If one was dramatically different than the other, we certainly would not have proposed it or approved it. In fact, this month in CISM, we just had another situation at 8th Avenue and Buff Street, where the traffic counts were considerably different on one street versus the other, and we did not approve that one. So this one was only getting in under the standard that because the two volumes were similar, that it would be permissible. And, you know, the engineers did advise against a four, against moving the two stop signs around between 10th and Stark. They were not excited about the idea of a four-way stop, but with traffic volume being fairly closely matched, it doesn't violate the standard, was the way I came away from that meeting, understanding our staff.
Yes, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm not certain if this is working.
I don't, can you hear Alder Killian? No, he cannot.
Maybe come up through the.
Yeah. Well, we can. Thank you.
Thank you, I just have, yeah. This works, I felt like I was getting a karaoke on that one anyways, this is preferable. To Alder Rasmussen's point, I've got a question on that. So technically, was the staff recommendation against this? Because I see in the packet that there appear to be two related staff recommendations, and I think both of them recommend against a four-way, but I'm not on CISM, so I just wondered, could CISM, some members or chair clear that up? Thank you.
The engineers did recommend against both changes. They wanted the intersection left as was.
Alder, Alder Ryan?
Yes, I was gonna say, as a more explanation, that Tom Neal and I had talked about that, how the Cross Street is also near Tom Field, and that when you're looking at, you know, sports events, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic that may be crossing the street. So there is a safety issue. It may not be always when they're measuring it, but when you look at the activities that are at Tom Field, there is that safety issue, and especially on crossing the street. So it does make sense to look at the four-way stop. And there has been a few times when staff had said, "It's not a good idea," but the council in CISM has decided to go ahead. And I think this is one of those cases. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Peckham?
No.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
No.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Oh, you were on mute, we were so close. It looked like an i. Okay, she's, thank you. Motion passes 8 to 3. Thank you very much. We are moving on to item number 201010. It's another ordinance from CISM authorizing the removal of stop signs on North 1st Street and Macandou Street. And that was approved at committee 3 to 2. Do I have a motion by Rasmussen, second by Neal, is there any discussion here? Yes, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. The discussion that we had on this item, and I think the reason we ended up with a mixed vote, is because, well, with the closure of Macandou Street between 2nd and 3rd, with the development of the Aspiris Hospital Clinic downtown, that street closed permanently this week Monday. In keeping with the standard that says you will install your traffic control on the lowest volume street, these signs needed to be turned around, because Macandou Street between 1st and 2nd is essentially becoming like a private driveway in terms of flow. It's really only offering access either to the Aspiris Clinic parking lot or Cloverbelt. And so we did receive some communication from Kathy Volkman at Cloverbelt, who has a clear view of traffic around the building all day, and she had some concerns about interaction between vehicular traffic at 1st and Fulton, and, because that's going to be ramping up now with Macandou being closed. We did agree in committee, though, that if we observe issues where additional study or controls are needed at 1st and Fulton, that we would take that up as a separate CISM item, and just take action on bringing this intersection into compliance with the standard. That's why this is moving.
Okay, thank you. Alder Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not supporting this, I voted it down because it's not consistent to what we've been doing in CISM. It seems like every time, since I've been on the CISM committee, every time a stop sign intervention is needed, there's been a traffic surveys and stuff put out, and since there's no surveys or anything done on this, or traffic, whatever, not done, I'm not going to support this until a survey says, proves that this is needed. Thank you.
Okay, Alder Ryan? We're gonna get you, go ahead.
Okay, I have some of the same issues as Alder Larson, but in addition, I do think we need to do an updated traffic survey of 1st Avenue with the coming of the dental clinic, and because the eye clinic is a regional eye center for people with serious eye or diabetic eyes, we are getting people from out of the area that don't know Wausau well, as far north as Wabena that I've talked to, and as far south as Southern Portage County. I do think that we need to do a more in-depth analysis and see if it's appropriate, and that I do think we are going to have some of those clients from that area with this change could really throw off how they navigate around the city. So I really recommend we do more in-depth analysis and kick it back to CISM. Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. The CISM committee has been consistent with its standards. At our last meeting, we just approved this exact same change at 3rd and Macandou, and the council did approve that one. So, you know, with the closure of Macandou between 2nd and 3rd, now when a person gets to the intersection westbound of Macandou and 3rd Street, you're going to have to turn either left or right, because the Aspiris Clinic will be blocking that vacated area. So that said, that becomes the road less traveled, and 3rd Street becomes the road more traveled. So we did approve that change previously, and this would be consistent with that, and both of them are compliant with the standard that we are supposed to be adhering to. So we've not been inconsistent in CISM at all. In fact, in an effort to remain consistent, the first deviation that I can recall in a number of years is 10th and Stark. But we've been very, in very close adherence to the engineer's recommendations up to that point.
Thank you, Alder, Alder McElhany.
Would somebody at CISM explain this to me, because I'm just, I'm probably very tired, and that's probably not helping, but this stop sign was on 1st Avenue?
No, it was on 3rd Street, or it was on 1st Street.
1st Street, I mean, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. It was on 1st Street, and now we're gonna take that away, but not put one back on that private, because I think all that's there would be, like you said, though, the traffic from Aspiris and Cloverbelt, correct?
You'd be moving the sign from 1st to Macandou. There would still be one, it would just be on the opposite street.
Okay, I got it now, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Alder Killian, gonna get your steps in.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I've got it on Pacer. Yes, I do see in some of the meeting minutes that Mr. Wadinsky had brought up a concern about increased traffic on Fulton, used as an alternative route, once a measure like this was taken, and that is in my district, and if I'm not mistaken, the entire north side of Fulton Street are residential properties, so unless there's some real-time sensitivity or urgency here, I would kind of like to be able to touch base with some of those constituents living at the residential properties, and then take a look at the area to make sure, you know, that this alternative path, if it turns out that way, it doesn't increase the traffic to a point where it creates problems for them. So I don't know, perhaps there's some additional information on that, but if not, and it's not real-time sensitive, it would be a benefit to me to be able to talk to that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. On the north side of Fulton in that block in question is ABC Supply. It's between 3rd Street and 1st Street, and so the south side of the street is buildings that were acquired and raised by the Y. And so there's no residences in the immediate area. The traffic pattern, official traffic pattern and the reroute of Highway 52 through the city is 5th Street and 6th Street to Scott. So traffic, by our traffic controls, is not being encouraged or directed down Fulton, but we know that local motorists will choose Fulton just because it's one block to the north. That street, when we've had dialogue with engineering before, they That street, when we've had dialogue with engineering before, they believe that right-of-way is wide enough to accommodate additional traffic. And we've restricted some of the parking on the south side to accommodate Cloverbelt's drive-up for people trying to enter and exit. So it's about as wide as it's going to get. And... But there are no homes affected there.
Is there any further discussion? Alder Killian?
Yes. I would just reiterate my point that it's still in my district. And given any implications, I appreciate the clarification. I'd still like to look at it further if it's not absolutely urgent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To that point, though, as Alder Rasmussen said earlier, you know, the Fulton question is a separate issue and one that I'm sure we're probably going to end up addressing at CISM when we, you know, see what the trend will be. I had a communication with a constituent this week, and she was concerned about the, you know, Macandoe being closed, and she realized that nothing can be done about it. But I told her, you know, that was my route all the time if I was heading over to the west side. And now I'm just going to be, you know, going one block over and going down Fulton and taking my left. And I'm sure a lot of people will. So we're going to be looking at that and gauging the need for stops on First Street at that corner. Because we'll just have to do a traffic count and, you know, have a look at it. There's also a kind of a blind corner right there, looking north from Fulton onto First because the building goes right up to the corner. So, yeah, I'm sure it's something we'll look at, but right now we're just talking about the Macandoe intersection.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? Looks like we're ready to vote. Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson? Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Ryan's?
No.
McElaney? Alder McElaney?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
No.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to three. All right. Thank you very much. We're moving on to item number 201011, a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the creation and implementation of the Wausau Poet Laureate Program. That did pass unanimously, and it also came from the Arts Commission. I guess I'm just going to give a little spiel before... This is something that I brought forward to the Arts Commission because I think it's an important way for our community to kind of have a little bit more communication and allow for, you know, more arts, kind of helping us along through those difficult times. So just a little bit about the process. I worked with the Arts Commission. I kind of modeled this program after one in Washington, a city in Washington. So it's... It'll be the first for Wausau, but not the first for Wisconsin. So I don't know if there are any questions, or... Yeah, that looks like Alder Neal. I'm saying a motion? Is there a second? Second by Herbst? Yes, Alder Neal.
Sure. I was glad to see this come along and not really knowing how it's going to end up, you know, fleshing out in practice. But, you know, it's important in the ongoing social discourse to have a source to turn to that can kind of put into words what needs to be said and to sort of represent Wausau, you know, almost in a spiritual way. At least I'm seeing how, in my mind, how this might come to fruition. Yeah, certainly something I support. And thank you for bringing it forward.
Of course. Is there any other discussion? Okay. It looks like we're ready to vote. Thank you. McElaney?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan? Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Okay. Thank you very much, Arts Commission. We are going to need a poet laureate. All right. Next up, it's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee. It's file number 201012, approving the city's waiver of first right of refusal to repurchase property at 5801 Packer Drive from Ideal Properties of Central Wisconsin LLC. Formerly known as. Thank you. TNL Properties of Wausau LLC to Core Enterprises LLC. This passed the Economic Development Committee. Five to zero. Do I have a motion? Motion by Neal. Second by Wadinsky. Is there any discussion? I am not seeing any, so let's vote on this. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to item number 201009. It's a resolution originating in the Plan Commission, amending the general development plan and specific implementation plan at 1404, 1406, 1412 Grand Avenue, and 105, 107, and 111 Sturganetti Road to allow for three multiplex residential buildings in a planned unit development zoning district. This passed six to zero. Do I have a motion? Motion by Peckham. Second by Neal. Is there any discussion?
If I could?
Yes, Mr. Neal.
Yeah. I approved this, and I think it's definitely a worthy project. There was only one outstanding question that came up, and we voted for it, I think, with the understanding that that outstanding question would be looked at. And that was a potential concern for the driveway of the neighbor adjacent. Can anybody give us an update on how that came out?
Okay. So Alder Peckham looks to have some information.
Sorry, ma'am. Thank you. Yes. We met Ms. Bell Blair, excuse me, and Catherine Cronenrutter, and I met with Jay Cronenrutter. And Catherine kind of authorized him as the household designate. Anyway, they had previous discussions to our meeting in the driveway. And they amendably agreed on how the new drive is going to work and that their safety is not going to be put at risk. And the... All of the residents of the rental properties will be entering in the driveway. It's going to be physically separated from theirs in a manner yet to be determined. They're not sure whether they're going to want a fence or stones or a curved island or whatever. They're going to kind of play it by ear and let the building construction happen and then figure that out in a neighborly manner in the future. So I think it worked out really well.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if you have anything to add? Are there any further questions? Oh, yes. Alder Wadinsky, Larson, and then Ryan. Wadinsky first.
My question is, this agreement, will that be in writing? So the resident has something to fall back on?
I guess I would fall to the developer.
Yes. Since the Plan Commission meeting, we've been in conversations with the Cronenrutters. And Mr. Cronenrutter, Jay Cronenrutter, did send an email. I believe he sent it to me and also to the clerk. And so that, I would assume, is enough writing to substantiate his agreement. If not, I would be happy to print it, forward it, whatever. But we do have an email conversation.
That's documented?
That's documented, that he accepted our proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson?
I would just like to say thank you for taking us on and doing that and beautifying our city without asking for any TIF money. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Ryan?
Ms. E... I was just going to say that back in the '90s, I lived in Kenosha County in Salem, and sheer construction was... I think your headquarters were in Burlington, but you were doing a lot of construction in our little subdivision. So I have seen homes that were, you know, single-family residential homes. And I'm looking forward to seeing how these units come out. But I'm glad you're here now in Wausau. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? I think we're ready to vote. McElaney? McElaney?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Alder Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, file number 201014. It's a resolution from the Transit Commission approving the elimination of COVID-19 capacity limit on Metro Ride buses. I do see that Transit Director Greg Soibert is joining us via WebEx. I don't know if you'd like to say anything about this before we talk about a motion.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, the school district has announced that it is going to resume in-person classes. The reason the Transit Commission was presented this item in the first place is because we anticipated that may occur. And capacity limits of 10 on the bus may prevent some students from being able to get to school. So the Transit Commission has forwarded to the council a proposal to lift capacity limits entirely. They also asked that I work with the Wausau School District to see if we could determine how many students are likely to use Metro Ride services. So they have done some surveying. They've indicated to parents that there should be no expectation of social distancing on the bus. And they've determined that a total of 320 students may use our services. Now, they are going to split students by 50%, so no more than 50% of the student population is in attendance on any given day. So theoretically, that cuts the number of students to use our services on any given day to 160. I still anticipate that a capacity limit of 10 would cause some pinch points for us. We have a system where students transfer at a central location. So although in a neighborhood, for instance, we may not have a capacity limit, we would likely have some capacity constraints when they arrive to the transit center downtown. And we've only got so many additional vehicles that we can plug in to deal with that capacity. So that's the issue. You know, we implemented the capacity limits to enable social distancing. If you do the math, six feet apart on a 35-foot bus, that's 10 people. This proposal would eliminate that limit and would allow us to exceed that capacity. Given the numbers from the Wausau School District, I don't anticipate we're going to have full loads. I don't think we're going to have full standing loads by any means. But I think we're going to have, you know, 15, 20, maybe 25 kids on a bus.
Okay. Thank you. Before we start discussing this as a council, could I... I would like to entertain a motion. Motion by Peckham. Second by Herbst. All right. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I think the first thing that we all have to remember is that Metro Ride doesn't only serve students. Metro Ride is not for students. And Metro Ride also serves a decent-sized, transit-dependent community. And those residents rely on our service. And so many of them have health concerns. They either can't afford or are not able to drive or own a vehicle. And so they are in a position where they have no choice but to use public transit. That said, we put restrictions, capacity restrictions, on our buses last spring to keep people distanced and to keep them safe. Our bus drivers, our workforce, is going to be exposed to these kids every day, even if it's half the kids one day and the other half the next. The rest of the day, whatever exposure they've picked up in the morning or at 3:00, they are sharing with the transit-dependent passengers. And if our drivers, and we don't have a lot of employees to spare, if our drivers are ill or they're quarantined, who is going to drive the rest of those people where they need to go? And, you know, we, as officials who have to make the decision, lack the skill set to drive a bus. So we have to find a way to keep our workforce safe. And, you know, I guess I was a little bit appalled last night when I saw the reopen vote come through. Things in Marathon County are 100 times worse today than they were when we put these safeguards in place. They're 100 times worse than they were when kids went virtual last spring. And they're way worse than they were when they made the decision to start virtual in August. Case counts aren't going down. We've got 100 new cases a day. You know, and we still have people that are reticent to put on a mask. We have people that are reticent to stay away from one another. And people are dying. And so I'm really concerned about that. And, you know, even if the school district is not, you know, making a conservative decision that protects their workforce, I feel like we need to protect ours. We had the representative from the transit union at that meeting talking about the fact that he's convinced that if you put a bunch of kids on a bus together, even if they have masks on, there's no way they're keeping them on. And it's not the driver's responsibility to try to navigate our streets and make sure everybody in there is six feet apart and wearing a mask. I just feel like we are taking a risk that we shouldn't have to take. And, you know, I think if parents want to opt to send their child back in person, and the district wants to opt to let them all back in person, they really should have to figure out this conundrum because we have more people to serve than just kids. And I'm really concerned to make a vote tonight to lift that capacity limit when our virus numbers are going up and not down. Thank you.
I have Alder McElaney, then Alder Killian, and then Alder Neal. So Alder McElaney?
I want to explain, you know, that the Transit Commission went through two meetings with this, and it wasn't an easy decision. But here is why I made the decision. We, yeah, we do serve other populations, but we also have a very long history of serving the school population. This isn't something that popped up this year. I take, you know, are we putting our people at risk? We put... Those people are at risk being out and about. This is not the only risk they take driving a bus. We have... I mean, I want to reassure people that we're going to do the best we can. I would hope that the bus drivers will wear masks like they should. I think that they need, you know, there are some that don't. And I think that they need to put Plexiglas... They use... They have Plexiglas there. There's going to be... They have sanitizer there. You know, it's not just throwing people on the bus. I take exception to... The kids will definitely take their masks off. We have... That's something nobody can say is going to happen. Will it happen? Maybe. But to say all the kids are going to go take their masks off, I think, you know, let's not get hyp... Use hyperbole. You know, we offered in transit, do you need... If you're worried about kids taking masks off, would you need a... Some kind of volunteer that would come up to remind the kids not to get into fistfights with them? You're talking about, you know, high... Probably more middle-school kids that you need to keep your mask on. They need to keep their mask on at school. This is something that they're going to need to learn. So I feel what gave me heartburn to vote for this, to leave this, to lift the limits, is this. I am not, I do not feel comfortable in telling somebody that's always ridden the bus and telling those parents, yes, I have no other way of getting my kids to school. We can see the numbers have gone down significantly. So that is telling me that there are, most parents are trying to find other ways to get their kids to school, and bravo for them. But we still end up with 320 kids, you know, over, which is what, 4%? It is a low number that maybe they don't have any other way of getting to school. And I, I don't want a kid going by, we talked about scenarios. We have a kid sitting on a, standing on a, a bus row, it's going to, it's starting to get cold, snow will come soon, and the bus is at capacity at 10 and drives by. What does that kid do? Try to walk to school? Is the parent not home? Is the door locked? That gives me heartburn. And so that is, that is the, you know, that we went back and forth with for two different meetings. And, and they were long meetings. And so I, I can certainly understand people's reticence to do this. And yes, we do have a population that needs to use the buses as well. But again, we can't keep saying that the only place that they're going to get, you know, that they're going to get exposed is in a bus. I mean, you know, we have to do the best we can. It is a pandemic. And the, the only way we were going to raise these is if the school district would say, we are going to go back to, to full school. So I'm going to vote to lift this because I cannot, in all consciousness, have buses go by kids waiting on, on, on a bus stop. I, I, you know, the school district has not, you know, raised their hand and said, we'll, we'll find a different way. And so they are just telling the kids, you are to be to school at this day. I, I can't, I don't want to, but I just don't see a scenario of leaving a kid at a bus stop in the cold.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I certainly do not want to leave a child out in the cold either, and I don't think we should. I think what we need to do quite quickly, and not necessarily us, but other facets of government, starting with the school district, is to realize that this is not hyperbole. This is reality. And the reality is, until the, the stats and rhetoric changes, we are in a pandemic. And if the school district wants to send the public toward a cliff, it's not our job to transport them over the edge. So maybe the school district should have put more thought into that decision before putting us into a corner where we have to fill a bus in a crowded fashion essentially in a confined space during a pandemic of a novel virus. So to me, this is a non-starter, and it's, it's getting quite tiresome, I think, playing cleanup for the school district on policy. We should not be in this position, and I will certainly not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I was concerned to see this, you know, sure, lots of parents, you know, pushed the district to, to open schools. And, you know, that's fine, that's what they want to happen, that's fine. You know, but like just this week, I saw a graph that was quite eye-popping because it showed, you know, your horizontal bars going from like a quarter inch, quarter inch, a third of an inch, to like, you know, five inches. I mean, we are in a highly accelerating situation right now here in Marathon County. This wasn't a graph for New York City or in the USA. This is for Marathon County. We are, it's, it's, it's really bad. Now, I look at the extraordinary steps that we're taking in these chambers and in City Hall and the clerk's office, and, you know, trying our best to ensure safety. Now, I'm sure within the school environments themselves, they've given a lot of thought in our, you know, finding ways to ensure separation, distancing, barriers, sanitization, all this kind of stuff. And that's something that they can reasonably control. They're taking steps. We're taking steps. Everybody's taking steps. There's been a new mask mandate from the governor. But all of a sudden, here, we have something that's like, no, let's take out all the controls and just let it go wide open. This is, this is a little exception to the rule. Now we've got a hermetically sealed bus basically tooling around town full of kids. And, and thank you, you know, Alder Killian for your, your good use of words about the cliff. I, I find this something I just cannot support. You know, if school's going to be opened, then find a way to make it workable from a transportation standpoint, and don't just throw this out and expect that it'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I cannot support this either because I, I sit back and I, I think of my own grandkids and your grandkids and your grandkids and your kids. And, and we are in the middle of a situation that, that's spreading and spreading and spreading, and we cannot encourage to spread it anymore, and therefore I will not support it.
Thank you. I have Alder Rasmussen and then Alder Peckham.
Thank you. And I think this comes down to, you know, kind of like what Alder Killian said, is, you know, do we want to make one day, a dangerous decision to support someone else's also dangerous decision? And, you know, at some point, I think we have to stand up and, you know, do what's right and, and be the example. And, you know, on any given day, sometimes the decisions we make, half the people are going to be mad no matter what. But at the end of the day, I just, you know, we were so cautious and so careful to put controls in place early in the pandemic. I mean, remember when we only had six cases? That's when we created this stuff. Now, today we have 2,703 and going up every day. So, you know, I think, you know, to say that they're taking steps to keep their workforce safe, I guess I question that as well. You know, I've talked to teachers today that are scared to death of this, and they were scared to death last night when the vote came through. So, you know, I think that we need to, we need to, I guess, look at the, really the health and safety aspects of this. And, you know, if that means that one unit of government is at odds with another temporarily, we can't help that. We didn't ask for this.
Thank you. Alder Peckham.
Yeah, just briefly, I was one of the yes votes on this, and we did agonize over this at the Transit Commission. And we, as, as McElhany indicated, we did have the matter come up at one meeting, and we chose to postpone the decision for a week so we could get some public input on it and didn't just, you know, spring it on the community. But after we talked through it, one of the things that I think helped it pass on this split vote was that the head of the union was asked if he thought that there were drivers that were going to be so uncomfortable with this that they would not, they would refuse to take those routes. And he didn't think that was going to happen. And my thought that I kept coming back to is that if the students, if the parents are willing to send the students and if the school is willing to take the students and put them in a closed building for six hours, we can have them on a bus for 12 minutes. If all we were doing was, you know, should we exceed the capacity limits that we proposed and have been abiding by, just, you know, generally speaking, we would have said no. But if they're being on a bus for a short time and then being together in a school building for six hours, it kind of changed our perspective on it. So that's where we were at on that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I think we're ready to vote.
Rasmussen?
No.
Watson?
No.
Herbst?
No.
Larson?
No.
Ryan? Ryan?
No.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
No.
Killian?
No.
Neal?
No.
Wadenski?
No.
McElhany?
Aye.
Motion fails 2 to 9.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have a, a couple of resolutions to vote on that require suspending the rules. So I would entertain a motion to suspend Rule 6B filing, and this will require a 2/3 vote majority. Motion by Neal. Second by Herbst. Any discussion? I think we're ready to vote.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
No.
Killian?
No.
Neal?
No.
Wadenski?
No.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Motion passes 11 to 0.
Wait, thank you very much. Rules are suspended here. So the first item is file number 161110. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing the Wausau Police Department to accept a Victims of Crime Act grant, $300,000 per year for four years in an amount not to exceed 1.2 million to continue the victim resource unit. Before I entertain the motion, I would like to just give Captain Ben Graham an opportunity to kind of talk to us a little bit about what this is.
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet to assist the council, I provide a two-page, two-page document that sort outlines the reason for this resolution. And at the PD, we are entering our second year of a five-year grant through the Victims of Crime Act, which is administered by the Office of Crime Victim Services down in Madison. Last year, in September, we did request grant funding acceptance of the amount of $300,000 to support our victim resourcing, which was created back in 2016. However, at the time, we did not address the reoccurring years, 2 through 5. And the way it works in years 2 through 5 is it's no longer competitive, but we are required to resubmit an application for that grant. It is anticipated that we will receive an additional $300,000 per year for the next four years, and is the reason why we're asking today for acceptance of continued funding. And the reason for the parent statement in an amount not to exceed 1.2 million is because there is potential in year four and year five for a decrease in funding depending on federal funding levels. If you're not familiar with the victim resource unit, it's comprised of a therapist, a crime response specialist, and an officer. And they exist to help a victim bridge the gap between the point of victimization and wellness. And so they deal a lot with a lot of year-sensitive crimes. It's Domestic Violence Month in October, and that is the primary crime that they are typically focused on. But they also focus on other crimes like homicide, sexual assault, especially crimes against children. So we are seeking authorization to accept that vote grant of $300,000 per year for the next four years to continue the victim resource unit.
Thank you very much, Captain. Do I have a motion to accept this? Motion by Wadenski, second by Neal. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any. I think we're ready to vote.
McElhany? Did she get it? Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan?
He said aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much, everyone. All right, file number 921135. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing joint powers agreement with Marathon County regarding the emergency 911 system. I wonder if, do you like to give us a little brief on this, City Attorney Jacobson?
Sure. This is an agreement we've had in place and approved by council since 1993 that when an emergency vehicle is dispatched in response to a 911 call, they'll render services to that person even if they're outside of our jurisdictional boundaries. Deputy Billab contacted me and felt we should sort of renew the agreement, given the change in leadership and staff over the years. So this is just a reaffirmation of that commitment and kind of a resetting of the date effective to September 1st. It will expire after a year, and then we will commit to renewing that on an annual basis since we have to also file it with the Department of Justice.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? A motion by Herbst, second by Larson? Any discussion on this? Not seeing any. I think we're ready to vote.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much. File number 191109, a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2020 budget modification for $15,000 contribution to the Catholic Charities Homeless Housing Project and related payment. Just to let you know a little bit more about this, we've been searching high and low for a space for the warming center so that we can keep people out of the cold this winter, but also socially distant because we're still dealing with the pandemic. And finally, last week or the week before, we got the approval from the Methodist Church to use their basement, which will allow up to 40 people to stay there, and it will also allow some areas for folks to be sequestered if they end up being exposed to the virus. So the, the money here that we're requesting is for creating a shower. It's something they don't have at their church basement, is a shower facility. And I just want to let you know that I took your, your budget survey results seriously when you said that homelessness was an issue that you wanted to address as a council. And so this is an opportunity for us to help, help this through. So there's my spiel. I would entertain a motion for this budget modification. Motion by Larson, second by Killian. Is there any discussion? Yes, Alder Wadenski.
Is this location a new location, or the old location will be closed? Or is this an alternate secondary location because of COVID?
It's a new location for this year. So the, the last location is way too small to offer any distancing. So that will be closed, and this will be open for this year. I think they're, ideally, they want to be located with the Community Partnership Campus once that gets going. So it's probably not permanent, but it's permanent enough for, right now, for the season.
Thank you.
Yes, Alder Peckham.
Yeah, the, I don't know if this thing is like, the shelter will move, Catholic Charities office will stay. That's my understanding.
Good distinction. Thank you. Is there any more discussion? I think we are ready to vote.
Larson? Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much. Next item is file number 2. Oh. You said you didn't vote? Did I hear something? Okay. We're just going to move on to file number 201013. Resolution from the Finance Committee approving the lease agreement with Wausau Area Winter Farmers Market LLC for the property at 180 East Wausau Avenue. This is another one of those COVID events. They were, they needed a new space for their, for their winter farmers market because the Boys and Girls Club isn't going to work for socially distancing, anything. So we happen to have this space for the winter. So I would, I don't know if you have anything to add, City Attorney, on any of the lease agreement terms?
I would just point out that if any of you recall, that the Barrel House is looking to construct at this site as well, and they are in agreement that they would take conveyance of the property should that happen before this lease term ends in April, subject to the lease to the farmers market. So they are well aware of it and in agreement, and they've indicated, to my knowledge, that
This request would be to fund an additional $93,814 from the Metro Ride Reserve account. So, we're not looking for, you know, something from the general fund. This would come from Metro Ride Reserves.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? Motion by Rasmussen, second by Killian? Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan? Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you. I think now we can move on to public comment, if there is any. I'm not seeing the public here. So...
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn? Take a second by Neal. We are adjourned, everyone. Thank you very much for sticking with us.